Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the March 5th meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. It may not look like it outside, but the days are getting longer and I think I have double-digit temperatures for the next 10 days on my weather app on my phone. So I'd like to welcome you to spring with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Meeting documents are down on the end, next to Commissioner Karski. And Carol will be here with a listening device if anyone needs one. That takes us into the swearing-in ceremony for County Auditor Bob Litz. We have Judge John Peck is here today with us.
Good morning. And I'd like you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Robert Litz, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties of my said office of county audit.
Four more years.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Second item is entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the February 26, 2019 commission meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the meeting minutes from the Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County joint meeting from last week.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the bills to be paid in the amount of $518,227.56.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Today's bills include $12,000 to the Del Rapids ambulance and $189,000 to Metro Communications.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to reports. We have reports for consideration. First one is the 2018 SDACC annual report for Minnehaha County medical and subsistence expenditures. And we also have the Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for January 2019. Item five, personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have somewhat of a short list for you today. Would like to recognize the following significant anniversaries for March 2019. We have Annie Lebingen, who is a caseworker at Human Services, and Josh Phillips, who is a deputy sheriff captain now in the sheriff's office, both celebrating 15 years of service this month.
All right, congratulations to both of them. Thank you.
The next item I have is to record the volunteers and county departments for February 2019. A little bit smaller list for February, there's only, only 268 volunteers, so still a substantial number helping us out throughout the county. So our thanks goes to them as well.
Absolutely. Thank you to all of them as well. That's great service and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next item, item six, abatements. There are none. Item seven, notices and requests. Request to authorize the auditor to publish notice of a hearing on March 26, 2019 for TDC Enterprise Retail On-Cell License Application.
Would move for approval to publish the notice?
Second and a question.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Commissioner Karski?
What is the cost of this license? Do we know?
It's a little over $192,000.
Okay, they pay the city cost for this license out in the county. Okay, just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Not? We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are a number of planning and zoning notices. The first one is the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing for rezoning number 1808. Kevin Hookman.
Yes, rezoning number 1808 is a rezoning request to rezone lots 10 through 23, except the road in blocks 5 of Lion Village addition in section 17, township 103 North, range 50 West. Is noted in this, it's in the Village of Lions. And the rezoning is to go from R1 residential to C commercial. I think we're getting a map up here. The Planning Commission has heard this item twice. The first hearing that the Planning Commission did was on October 22nd of 2018. At that hearing, it was brought up there, there's a bunch, a lot of junk items on the property and you can kind of see it in the map. There's some, a bunch of vehicles on the property. And the Planning Commission deferred action to allow some time to clean up some of those junk items. At the February 25th hearing, it was brought back from the deferral and staff presented that the items were not removed. And the Planning Commission recommended denial for the rezoning at the February 25th meeting. This is the first reading of the item and for rezoning 1808. And it's a request to authorize the auditor to publish notice of the public hearing. And staff is requesting that the public hearing be on March 26th of 2019. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Kevin? Noted, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the publish of the notice of that rezoning?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing for rezoning number 19-02. Kevin?
All right. And this is another rezoning hearing. This is to rezone the property legally described as north 500 feet, the south 540 feet, east 1,059.57 feet, the north 316.5 feet, south 856.5 feet, .05 feet, the east 775.93 feet, and the north 261 feet, the south 1,117.05 feet, the east 471.01 feet, on southeast quarter, the southwest quarter, section 12, 10450 in Burke Township. This rezoning request is for Del Rapids Custom Trailers. The property is approximately 15.74 acres to rezone what remains of the property, some of the property is already industrial, from A1 agriculture to industrial, so it's just filling in the rest of the property. At the joint hearing of the City of Del Rapids, and would recommend it approval on the February 25th, 2019 hearing. And again, this is a first reading for the rezoning 1902 and to authorize the publish, the auditor to publish notice of the hearing for March 22nd, 26th, 2019.
Any questions? Anybody that would like Kevin to read the legal description one more time? If not, it entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to publish notice of, is it 19-02?
Yes.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And so the last item is a first reading and to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing for rezoning 19-03. Good morning.
David Heinold, good morning. Planet County Planning Department. The rezoning request 1903 was submitted to rezone a portion of land, it's just 2.85 acres. It's actually two parcels of land separated out. One is Track 2 of Odie's addition and the other one is described out. It kind of, you see that red area on the map? It goes around it. The area that's shaded in white is actually in the city limits of Brandon. This is just abutting the city limits. This is kind of the island just to the west side of Brandon, about a mile to the west of the Brandon core area. This, the property is located about a quarter mile in between the intersections of Heritage Avenue and Holy Boulevard, directly right halfway. This item was heard before the Planning Commission, now requires a public hearing. Final action from the County Commission. Staff is requesting a hearing date of March 26, 2019 be set. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning. A map has been provided to you, as long as several petitioner provided documents for review in the minutes two. Action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of a public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revisoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. Should be held on March 26, 2019 at 9:00, at or after 9:00 a.m. at a meeting in the Minnehaha County Commission. And answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioner Karski?
For the next meeting, David, because this is the first reading, we're setting the date, right? Okay. When we rezone it to I, it looks like they're planning on storage units, that type of thing. Is there a conditional use permitting process or requirement that would, if, I don't know what else, an industrial rezoning could be used for? So if you could just tell us?
So, yes. So with the industrial zoning district, there are conditional uses that are laid forth in many storage units, like separate storage units are a conditional use. So that would be required to go back to the Planning Commission for review.
So if they changed it from storage to, I don't know what other uses industrial would entail, but would they need a conditional use to change the?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question.
And, yeah, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, this is to rezone from the A1 agricultural district to the I1 light industrial district. Just forgot to mention that.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to publish this notice for 19-03.
Motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Commissioner Barth?
It's kind of interesting in the sense that this property is absolutely contiguous with the city of Brandon. And Brandon and Minnehaha County do not have joint jurisdiction in this near area. That, of course, is a contrast to what we have with the city of Sioux Falls and the city of Del Rapids. That said, I don't think they'll be unhappy with this.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. So that takes us to item nine. First item is DPNO 46028 in the amount of $2,142.65. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. Before you is a petition to compromise lien DPNO 46028 in the amount of $2,142.65. The lien fees were recorded from February 2018 through January 2019 and represent public defender fees for Minnehaha County and Brookings County court-appointed attorney and poor relief fields, fees for the lien E. The petitioner is requesting release of the lien only insofar as a real property with no payment. Her ex-spouse transferred his interest in the property by quitclaim deed on November 13, 2018, but has never been listed on the property. The legal description is Lot 2A, Block 13 of Rustic Hills addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the record plat thereof. The petitioner, sole owner of the property, is in the process of selling her home and will be closing on March 8, 2018. She states that she separated from her ex-husband on June 11, 2018, and divorced on November 26, 2018. She commented that the lien fees are all his and that she should not be responsible for them. She is aware that they were married when the public defender fee for $178.60 was recorded. She was the victim in the domestic violence charge, but is still willing to pay 50% or $89.30 of that fee if needed. She is not available at the meeting today.
Any questions for Melinda? Melinda, I just want to confirm that she understands that she'll need to contact the other county to get the liens waived for the other items.
Yes, yes. She's aware that she's either going to have to delay her closing from March 8th in order to reach out to Brookings County, or she may have to pay the full amount just to be able to move forward and close.
Madam Chair, I'm in sympathy with this applicant and I would make a motion to approve settling it as she has proposed.
Are you suggesting with the payment of the $89.30?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other comments? Is there a second?
I will second that for conversation.
Okay.
What's the conversation?
Pardon?
Did you have a comment, Commissioner Barth?
Well, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just laughing.
I will make just a comment that in 2017, that there was a payment in full of everything up to that point before they started this whole process over again with a public defender and a court-appointed attorney and poor relief. I think they, or she has probably made the ability, at least tried to keep this current as possible until the second event happened. So I do feel some sympathy in a, an abuse case to be able to take this down a step, if you will, to make her former spouse responsible for his activity.
Can I make a substitute motion?
Sure.
That motion would be that we compromise lien in full with no payment.
I'll second that also.
Now you guys are getting me into parliamentary. So I get a, I've got a motion in a second on the substitute motion. We vote on the substitute motion first. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and the substitute motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the substitute motion passes unanimously. So we vote on the underlying motion? Good. That's what I thought. All right. Hey, you guys tested me and we passed.
Doesn't that become the main motion and then we vote on that?
Correct. Yeah, so we're done. We had a motion in a second on the substitute motion and it passed. So we are done with that one. Okay. I'll leave you. I need a roll call vote. We need a roll call vote, sorry. We're not done with that one.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger? Oh, she's not here. Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Now we're done with that one. Okay, thank you. So, Melinda, that takes us to the second one. DPNO 23603 in the amount of $20,000.
Payment towards this lien totals $601. The lien represents various types of poor relief assistance from 1988 to 2005. The last record, it's been 14 years since the last recorded fees on these, on this lien. Medical fees represent $13,871.33. Dental represents 102.84 cents. Juvenile legal representation is $4,737.75. And the petitioner legal representation represents $3,876.97. The petitioner is requesting release of the lien in full upon payment of $2,200, or release the lien in full only insofar as a real property with no payment. The legal description is Lot 10, Block 5 of Lowell Hill addition to Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. The petitioner, who is listed as the homeowner, parcel 39092, is in the process of refinancing the home he acquired after his mother's passing in 2015. He is expected to close on the loan no later than March 28, 2019. He would like to reduce his mortgage payments from $800 a month to $541 a month. He has included an extended narrative and has provided supporting documents which will help explain his plea. He is also not available today due to a conflict with his work.
Any questions for Melinda? Commissioner Barth?
This applicant wrote a brilliant letter. And, you know, it's certainly a bit of a stretch, but should he be able to continue to live in his mother's house, et cetera, he'll be a taxpayer. And I, I'm going to make a motion, I guess, to accept his proposal.
You made two alternative proposals? Which one were you?
The one where he offered $2,000, right?
To, to release the lien in full upon payment of $2,200, or release the lien only insofar as a real property with no payment.
I would release it in full with the payment of $2,200.
Second and a comment, if I may. This has been sitting out there for 20-plus years, partially at least, and now we got some money coming in. And I agree with Commissioner Barth that freeing this person up so that they can become a more productive member of our county and property taxpayer. And the letter was brilliant, I have to agree. And I don't know how old this person was when they went through these things, but it appears that there's been some maturing and maybe a little bit of mea culpa on the part of what I did. And for that reason, I will support it with the payment of the 2,000, was it 2,000 or 2,200?
$2,200.
Good votes.
Any other comments?
I have to say I have questions about, and I'm struggling with this when I read through it. And again, the letter was well-written and he makes a really good point, but what's the value of the home that he inherited? I don't remember seeing that in the 20-some pages of information.
Well, the parcel sheet that I pulled up only shows a non-ag value of $13,200. And I don't have any other parcel information other than that.
I guess the issue for me is they talk significantly about his cost and the mortgage and all that. Yeah, go ahead.
On the one page, it says property value $167,000. And that's on the Great Western Bank page, which is, trying to see what page I'm on here. Page three of seven. Yeah, it's after the pay stubs and et cetera, towards the bottom, second page from the bottom.
Oh, on the lien sheet, $84,456, is that what you just said?
Right. It says property value $167.
Yeah, on the loan estimate from the bank. That's what they, they estimate the property value at.
Estimate.
Yeah.
If I might speak in favor of my motion, I think 2,000 in hand is better than 20,000 in the woods.
You have other comments, Commissioner Benega?
I agree with that concept. If however he refinances this, his interest rate currently is 4.3%, according to the Great Western. And frankly, I don't think he would get another interest rate at that level and his payment will go up on a lot of this. I'm struggling with the fact that, that he's inherited a home that has some significant equity, but has decided not to pay anything more than that to the county for his legal responsibilities. That's where I'm coming from.
Well, I would just chime in that I've really struggled with this one as well. I mean, there's, and it constantly amazes me that we get to this part of our agenda and, you know, we're not talking about huge dollars, but there are always perplexing issues about fairness and justice and, you know, how you, how you parse those things up. And, you know, this is a situation where you have somebody who, by all accounts, has rehabilitated themselves, which is what we aim for, and are glad that the person doesn't appear to have, you know, needed our assistance for the last 14 years and appears to be paying taxes and gainfully employed and all of the kinds of things that we seek to establish in our criminal justice system. And, but you have to balance that against the fact that the taxpayers of Minnehaha County allowed him to get there in advanced funds to, to allow him to get to the place he is today. And he, and he does have a valuable asset that it does appear at some point, you know, perhaps he could make payments more than $2,200. And so, you know, when you try to balance those two things, it's hard to, it's not like a mathematical equation where you come to the end of the day and you like, sometimes they're more clear. This one is one that I have, you know, really struggled with because we only get the information that we get as well. And it's hard to, you know, always know that you're getting all the information that you would really ideally want in the best of circumstances. At the end of the day, I kind of came into the meeting not knowing exactly where I, where I would land, but, you know, listening to the discussion and thinking about it a little bit further, I think I would err on the side of grace in this situation and give credit to the person who has rehabilitated their life and, or paying taxes and are going to pay property taxes. So I think I would be in favor of the motion. Any further comments?
I have to say I'm still struggling with this because in prior conversations, to treat this individual the same as we've treated other individuals in similar circumstances, we've collected about 50% of the cost. And in this one, we're collecting 10% or just a little bit more. And he is gainfully employed. He has stayed out of trouble. He does have a good job. Hasn't made any payments on a regular basis. I'm still struggling with that concept.
Commissioner Karski?
And I know what you're saying, Commissioner. He, he thought that this was dismissed as part of a bankruptcy, so he wasn't even aware until he refinanced that this was still hanging out there. And, and digging deeper into the numbers and the risk of jeopardizing this, but can we, I mean, he's offered to pay this, can we counter and say for $5,000, we can do it and send it back a week? Because there is a significant asset here when I look at the home value and what he's going to be borrowing and, you know, to increase his loan by $3,000 isn't going to increase his payment a whole lot on his house payment, but it would be more fair to the taxpayers of the county. And if he'd be willing to come up with $5,000 versus $2,000, I think it would make, I think it would be more fair to the people that we've worked with in the past in compromising these things. So I would, is there a motion?
There is a motion in a second.
Substitute motion again?
Well, I'd request that we defer it for a week and ask him to come back with $5,000. I can't remember when his closing is. Is it the 8th?
28.
Okay. So, I mean, he has time and I think it would be a reasonable request is, ask him to come up to the table with a little bit more in order for us to make that consideration.
Would it be faster if I withdraw my motion then?
That'd be great.
Okay, I'm withdrawing.
And I'll withdraw my second? I think I did the second. And ask that it be pushed back for a week and request him to come with $5,000 instead of $2,200.
I'll second that.
Is there discussion about that number?
I think I've said enough.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second to defer and request additional funds. All in, oh, roll call vote.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
No.
Bender?
Aye. Three to one.
Can I just add a comment? I do appreciate everybody's concern about this. And I think it's just a conversation about equitable decisions that have been made in the past. And I think, as it's been already suggested, the taxpayers are the ones that are paying the difference for right now. I do think cash in hand is better than nothing. So that's all I'll say at this point.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Melinda. So it's our opportunity for public comment? Is there anyone here who would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? I see no one rushing the podium. We'll move on to regular business. First item on regular business is to consider a motion to issue the annual proclamation. Recognize- recognizing March thirteenth and fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen as Sioux Empire Water Festival Days. Catherine Jaeger, good morning.
Good morning, my name is Catherine Jaeger, I'm here representing the Sioux Empire Water Fest. I also work with Chuck Martineau in the South Dakota four H program. So I'm here on his behalf to ask you guys to proclaim next week, Wednesday and Thursday, March thirteenth and fourteenth, as Sioux Empire Water Fest days.
All right, would you like to read the proclamation?
I sure can. Whereas the Big Sioux Aquifer underlies approximately one thousand square miles and together with the Big Sioux River provides water to communities in southeastern South Dakota, whereas providing twenty-two hundred fourth grade children from one hundred classes in forty-four southeastern South Dakota schools with information about the protection and preservation of water, our most valuable resource, will help children make educated decisions concerning water in the future. Whereas this education is accomplished with the help of one hundred plus staff and volunteers from federal, state, county, and city governments and from private businesses. Whereas this is the twenty-sixth annual event, whereas the county commission recognizes the long-term benefits of this type of education and supports such educational efforts. Now therefore, we, the Minnehaha County Commission, do hereby proclaim March thirteenth and fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as Sioux Empire Water Festival Days in Minnehaha County.
Wonderful. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Madam Chair, could I make a couple of comments?
Absolutely.
One is that water is so important to all of us and it seems like regularly we're finding new, uh, new chemicals that are potentially an issue for drinking. And I would also say we've had children come into our commission meeting room and, uh, and make it festive. I can remember, uh, you know, I don't know what it was, a, a third grader talking about how the water we drank today is the same as the water that a Tyrannosaurus Rex and George Washington drank. And, uh, so it comes back to us. And, uh, I guess one other thing I would say is there's just an item in the news about two little girls lost in the woods for two nights that were found safe. And they used the skills they got from four H to survive. And what a wonderful story that was and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to item eleven, we have a brief update on the Regional Juvenile Detention Center Services. Jamie Gravitt, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. Today I'll give you some statistics that are our final statistics from two thousand and eighteen. I'll discuss what we're seeing with those dis- those statistics and then also, uh, talk about some challenges and opportunities that we have at the detention center. So with that, I'll start with the first set of statistics, our two thousand and eighteen intake calls. We had, did a total of nine hundred and twenty-one intake calls for our region, which consists of sixteen counties. Uh, it's basically the whole southeastern corner of the state that calls us when they have a youth in custody to have us complete a risk assessment instrument and determine where is the proper place for that child at that time. As you can see, Minnehaha County, uh, consists of about eighty percent of those calls. So it's law enforcement in Minnehaha County, whether it's Sioux Falls PD, Minnehaha County Sheriff, Brandon PD, any of the law enforcement in Minnehaha County that make those calls. One of the things that's unique in Minnehaha County too as well is we complete, uh, abuse and neglect intake calls. Where other counties, they're calling judges for that. So that increases our calls by about two hundred in Minnehaha County alone. The next slide just again breaks that down by the type of calls. Whether it's a criminal activity, warrants, bond revocations, those types of things. Some of those four hundred and seventy-one in the crime area will also have warrants. The warrants that you see on this list are, are just warrants alone, usually, uh, because of traffic offenses or something of that nature, um, the, the magistrate type issues. Each call averages about forty minutes, it's a little bit higher over two thousand and seventeen. I think we were at thirty-eight and a half minutes in twenty, twenty seventeen. Part of the reason it's a little bit higher this year is we've had some turnover and as new officers are learning how to do the process, it takes longer until they get in the groove. As well, we were doing some double duty work. There was a new system put in place by the state called the J-Ray system where, uh, it helps us come, uh, tally the score on that risk assessment instrument. And, uh, so we were doing some double duty to make sure that that was accurate and, and performing as it should. Pretty much the numbers of intake calls are consistent over the, about the last three years, where within about fifty calls each way, either side. Uh, we think we're hitting that plateau that we figured would happen once people got accustomed with, uh, JD AI, knowing when to call, what to call for. Uh, so we're, we're hoping that that trend will continue. The next slide, we'll talk about admissions. Excuse me, two thousand and eighteen, again, breaking it down by county. Uh, you'll see here that fifty-six percent of the admissions are from Minnehaha County, followed up by the Department of Corrections and then Lincoln County are our top three users as far as sending people into the detention center. Next slide will break it down by year. Again, we're hoping that that's the plateau that we're expecting to hit. We're, we're staying pretty close on the number of admissions. One thing that we are seeing though is, the next slide will show you, is the admissions are staying pretty close to the same, but the bed days are increasing. Uh, they increased by about twelve hundred this last year from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and seventeen. A couple of reasons that they increased are, if, it's, it's kind of hard to see, but Hanson County, who usually uses no beds or very few beds, used two hundred and seventy-four days this year on a very unique mental health case that, uh, took forever to, to finalize and find placement for. Minnehahas are up a little bit. I, I contribute that again to the number of direct fileable cases or juveniles that because of their age and the type of crime that they committed are direct filed into adult court. Those cases are drawn out, uh, a lot longer. The kids that are in for adult types of charges usually are with us for a minimum of six months while trying to petition back to juvenile court or, or finding the right plea for their case. We averaged about five of those types of cases, uh, a day throughout two thousand and eighteen this year. So, so that's un- an unfortunate steady statistic that we're starting to see. We currently have, uh, six kids in the detention center, uh, for those types of crimes. Uh, we recently had two, uh, be successful in their petitions back to juvenile court, which that's a new concept that we haven't been seeing. In the past, usually they were, once they were in adult court, that's where they stayed, so. But those are a couple of the, the factors that are increasing those bed days. And then the next one just kind of shows you the trends. By, uh, and then by Minnehaha County. Average daily population for the full facility was twenty-eight point seven youth per day. Uh, again, that's up. And then it breaks it down by Minnehaha County. Which again, I, I, I believe that difference is those adult cases that we have. One of the things that shows that we're doing what we need to do for the youth is we're not taking kids that qualify for alternatives and holding them in appropriately insecure detention. We're continuing to use all those alternatives that are available to us, their numbers are up as well. So it's not like you see the alternative numbers going down and the detention numbers going up. That would be a bad sign for us. Twenty eighteen LSS, uh, the Arise Youth Center, would be the next slide, I believe. They serve three hundred and ninety-five youth throughout the year. Uh, the average length of stay was ten, roughly ten days. And the average daily population was eleven and their capacity is fifteen. So we're, we're utilizing that as much as possible. The Reception Center, uh, they had seven hundred and thirty-eight youth that arrived at their door. Uh, four hundred and ninety-eight of those youth were unique. Uh, the average length of stay at the Reception Center is five, just under six hours. And they're, they're serving approximately two youth a day. The Reception Center is the place that is designed, uh, in, in previous times before the Reception Center, if a youth didn't have a parent to release to, we would hold them either in shelter care or secured detention until the next day before they could see a judge. The Reception Center was designed and is utilized to help reunify those youth with parents without having to keep them in custody overnight and, and, uh, get them back out in the community as soon as possible. Usually low-level offenses to just where we can't find a parent immediately or a parent can't immediately get there, uh, because of work or some other type of problem. So we, we work to reunify those youth as soon as we can. The Evening Report Center is the next slide, uh, we served eighty-one youth, uh, throughout the year. Their average length of stay is just under thirty days. Uh, the average daily population is, uh, six point six two. We can serve seven kids a day, so you're, you can see that we're, we're keeping it filled and, and utilizing it to its maximum capacity. Community supervision's the other alternative that's run out of the Juvenile Detention Center. We had a hundred and thirty-four total new cases broken down there between Minnehaha and Lincoln County. Those are the two counties that we serve with this program. Uh, there was a total of fifty-one, five thousand, one hundred and seventy days of service. And again, it's broken down between the two counties. Uh, the average length of stay on this program again is roughly thirty days. And the average daily population is, uh, fourteen youth. Some of the challenges that we're facing at the Juvenile Detention Center is the level of violence with the youth that are housed. Uh, we're working hard to come up with solutions to try and alleviate some of these issues. A lot of the issues that, that come from these youth are, are youth that are seeing that they're, they feel that there's nothing to look forward to and it doesn't matter what they do. So then they start acting out a little bit violently. Uh, we've been working on new de-escalation skills, we've been working on, uh, new skills to try and prevent the violence from happening to begin with. Uh, we're really working, uh, to understand backgrounds of the youth better than we have in the past with, uh, interview skills. Uh, we're, we're training our staff on how to handle themselves so that they can prevent themselves from being injured in situations. Uh, so we're, we're doing everything we can to reduce that. Uh, one of the challenges that we're really struggling with is recruiting and maintaining part-time staffing levels. Uh, part-time staff are benef- very, highly beneficial to us because it gives our full-time staff the ability to take time off. Without those part-time staff, uh, it, it makes it difficult, they either have to trade, uh, they can get frustrated and, uh, with the, the challenging youth that we deal with, they need to be able to take time off when they, when they can use it. Um, one of the, it, one of the things that we're going to start doing is, uh, later this month, Nate Ellens, our Assistant Director, is going to be going with HR to, uh, one of the job fairs at the local college to try and work at promoting our facility and the benefits of, uh, that we can provide them while they're in school, let alone, you know, after they graduate. So hopefully, uh, we can start seeing some, some people, uh, applying and staying with us. I put down warrants there. Uh, some of the warrant increases that we've seen, some no-bond warrants that were issued over the last year. Uh, we're working as a JD AI group to reduce that. Uh, one of the ideas that we've come up with that we're trying to implement is, uh, immediately after they miss court on that day, trying to contact them, find out what happened, why they missed, and trying to get a new court date scheduled right away. That can prevent some of these no-bond warrants from coming out. And then they wouldn't even have to spend that one night in, in custody, uh, to get a new court date. Uh, so, uh, we're trying to work with the, uh, the court reminder people that have been set up to do these find-out-why type things. Cause a lot of times, uh, we sometimes get calls at the detention center within a day or so saying, hey, I missed court, what do I need to do? And a lot of times if we can just call them, find out what the problem was, might be a transportation issue and we can get case management hooked up with them to try and give them, uh, transportation assistance. Uh, it, it could be minor things that we can help them with, get them into court and prevent days at JDC. So, uh, we're working to get that finalized. And then, uh, the final challenge I list is just maintenance and upkeep of an aging building. The core of our building is fifty years old. Uh, the, the newest part of our building's twenty-five. Uh, there's, there's a lot of, uh, unpleasant-looking areas that, that need some attention. Uh, one of the great things that's happened is when we moved facilities to taking over and working with our building, they've done an outstanding job at preventative maintenance that is, is keeping it together. But it is aging. Uh, one of the big areas that we've seen problems with over the years is, is, uh, the different locks in the building, uh, that are very expensive to, to keep up. If we have to replace one lock, it's a thousand dollars. So, um, the preventative maintenance has been huge and we're going to continue to do that. It's just that there's, there's certain issues like in our gym with the foundation sinking that we're going to have engineers come out and determine what, what can be done with that, what can stop that, what kinds of things can be done to prevent any further damage, so. And then opportunities and projects. We're in the process of developing an internet visitation protocol for families who are unable to travel. Uh, we've purchased three, uh, Amazon Fires. Uh, and we're going to be putting a program on them that, uh, a lot of hospitals use for long-distance type of things because it has the safety protocols so that, uh, privacy is kept and, and can't be hacked into. And, uh, we're, working with the families to find times to where we can get some face-to-face visits because the, we find that the more contact that they can have with family, uh, the better and the face-to-face contact's even better than just a phone call. So, uh, we're working to get that finalized. Like I said, we're partnering with Human Resources to recruit more part-time staff. Uh, we're finishing our study regarding the addition of a Sally Port. We're evaluating and making suggestions for improved courtroom security. Uh, I'm working with Gerald to have a time where he can come and observe court and meet with the judge and, and discuss this further, but I've been working with Mark as well. And, uh, Mark's coming out on Thursday and we're going to start getting some figures put together. Uh, we feel we can reconfigure that courtroom at a, at a reasonable cost and, and meet the safety needs that the court is asking for, so. Uh, and then we want to continue to serve as a model site for, uh, JDA sites that are coming on board throughout South Dakota. So far, we've had, uh, a group from Mitchell come and, uh, we can show them our facility. It's good for a couple of reasons, they know what the facility looks like now when they're sending kids there. Um, and then it also, we can work with them in guiding them on how we did things to try and get, uh, a Reception Center or an Evening Reporting Center. I hear, uh, the Mitchell community is already coming close to having an Evening Report Center. They were here recently, observed what we did, had tours of our facility. So we want to continue to help those, uh, communities, uh, be successful as well. And then finally, I put, uh, take advantage of fresh perspectives. Uh, we have a new Assistant Director, uh, that replaced someone that had been in place for forty-one years. Uh, we're going to be making an offer later today for a new caseworker that's replacing somebody that's been there for forty-one years. So, I mean, people can become routine and having some of those new faces and new ideas and, and new perspectives, I think, can help us move forward through the next few years. and come up with great ideas to serve the youth that we have in our facility. With that, any questions that I can answer?
Any questions, Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, and thank you for this report, Director Gravitt. I noticed that the bed days for Minnehaha County are more than double of what they were in twenty sixteen. Twenty sixteen had a very, you know, smaller number, thirty-two hundred and forty-five. And then in twenty eighteen, we're at sixty-seven hundred and sixty-five. Our processes changed? Has our clientele changed? What happens?
The biggest difference has been the amount of those cases that are direct filed. Prior to twenty sixteen, there was a philosophy of trying to decide whether or not to transfer those cases, make sure that it's worth trying to transfer. When there was an interpretation of the law by our state's attorney that felt that they could better do it and make the right decision by taking a little more time and then either deciding to file in adult court or keep in juvenile because it made more sense. The interpretation of the law, it comes down to the word "shall" versus "may", in my opinion. The law says, you shall do this. And someone called them out on it and they started following the law to the T with the "shall". And that triggers a lot of different things. It triggers costs for the public defender. You know, I recall Tracy being questioned about some costs with expert witnesses. And all of a sudden, you have a youth that's being charged as an adult and they have to fight to bring this kid back to juvenile. They're utilizing these expert witnesses more than they ever have in juvenile court. So, it kind of has an impact on a lot of different things. But as far as bed days go, that's, to me, is the biggest thing when you have five kids in there for anywhere from six months to two years, depending on the age that they commit the crime.
You know, I've got to say, I only have probably a vague idea of what direct file means. So, could you explain that a little further?
You bet. I'm sorry. If you're sixteen years of age and you commit a Class II or higher felony, which means it's murder, manslaughter, first-degree robbery, first-degree burglary, rape, those types of charges, and you're sixteen, when you commit that crime, you shall be direct filed into adult court. We, and so, that begins that process of, they're going to get an attorney. They're going to make a motion to be brought back to juvenile court. But there's delays so that they can have all their ducks in a row before they have that hearing in front of a judge to determine, does this stay in adult court or does this go back to juvenile court? And, you know, like I said, up until recently, almost all of them stayed in adult court. And recently, we've had two now where their arguments were enough to convince a judge to bring them back. But like I said, then, it takes a lot of different steps in there too that cost money to help them make their case to come back to juvenile court.
You don't have to tell me, but would we be better off if the language was permissive and said, "you may", instead of "shall"? Or is it better this way?
I think we did a better job in Minnehaha County when we interpreted it as "may" because the state's attorney did a lot of real thought and work to determine whether or not it was absolutely necessary for this person to go to adult court and quite often could make resolutions of the cases with individuals without the long days in JDC and would get as good a result.
Any other questions for Jamie?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment or two. When Commissioner Hyburger and I first started as county commissioners, JDC was discussed as a significant building project and adding on tremendous number of beds. So, JDAI is working as an alternative program. If you have the opportunity to go through JDC, you'll see that some of the residents of that program, based on their history, are there for some serious concerns. I mean, it's just, the alternative programs have worked in keeping people out of JDC as the population number of kids shows. But the ones who are there are being charged with some significant related concerns. So, I do think that JDAI is working and I think it'll continue to work. Having two people that are reversed back into the child system does not make a big difference in your operating cost. It doesn't save you any staff. It doesn't save you anything from a facility operating standpoint. So, the alternative is probably less expensive, but you're not going to, quote, "save money" just because two people are reversed back. But you are putting them in a location where they need to be rather than, frankly, where they were sent before. So, I think it's appropriate that maybe we pursue a "will" versus a "shall" conversation at some point.
Can I make one more comment on that?
Absolutely.
I should be a little bit more clear. They weren't hesitating on a murder or manslaughter or something like that. It's more of these burglary charges that are first-degree burglary that they were considering the necessity of actually going to adult court.
And you took the words right out of my mouth because some of the people that we were talking about when I did my visit had been in there for some incredibly serious crimes and had been there for a long period of time. I mean, we're talking significant felonies. So, it's appropriate that they were in this location.
Correct.
But I think that JDAI has worked. I think that the JDC staff has been incredibly talented and professional in handling what they need to handle. In fact, the day I was there was one of those days where they had a little disruption in a court case. So, I got to see that firsthand, so to speak. So, I think the maintenance and the preventative things that we need to do are important.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? It was a very good report. Thank you very much, Jamie. Thanks for taking the time to come here today. So, that takes us to item twelve, Legislative Update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, before you is an update on legislative issues that we have been following because we are skating to the end of this particular legislative session. I just want to highlight it, a couple of bills that we're still following at this particular point. One is Senate Bill one eighty, which is funding for emergency radio systems. There's been excellent discussion about that this year and there is a hearing today in joint appropriations on that particular funding. As Commissioners, I think for at least two years, if not longer, you've been aware of the upgrades that need to happen and have been concerned about that. HB eleven thirty-two is to revise and enhance provisions regarding emergency involuntary commitment. And I know locally, we've been having some great discussions with the sponsor on that particular bill. And we are hoping, anticipating that this will have some long-term discussion as we're able to move forward in a very positive manner. And then two other bills that I just want to mention. One is HB eleven sixty, which is lowering the mill levy requirement that must be set to qualify for disaster funding. And that is a bill that SDACC, your association, has been supporting. That has been tabled. But I also see that in the news yesterday that the governor has come forward with some additional plans and we're not sure how this all falls into play yet, but we are glad to see that discussion continuing and concern from all parties involved in that. And lastly, I will just mention that House Bill eleven eighty-six, which is cost for prosecution and defense of crimes committed by inmates at state facilities, will be covered out of the extraordinary litigation fund. That bill basically got hog-housed and as a bill to reimburse counties is not happening, is not moving forward following Appropriations Committee. That's the update. Thank you. One, probably one more time, two more times. We'll just do some summaries.
Commissioner Kersky.
Just looking for permission to vent a little bit.
You can do it for all of us.
Two weeks ago, I was testifying, can't remember what Senate Bill, Craig isn't here, one oh six, thank you, which would have given permissive language for counties to have the same bed, booze, and board tax that cities, municipalities have. The comments by the senators on that, or some of the senators, I'm not going to blame all of them because some of them were definitely in our favor. But they acknowledge, like when you look at Senate Bill seventy, they acknowledge that these bills that they passed put a burden on the counties. And they thanked us for, you know, bringing forth solutions, but it's never the right solution. I don't think they've seen the right solution or would know the right solution if it came to them. I was upset and still am that they would acknowledge that they know there's a problem. They created the problem, but they won't allow us to solve the problem that they created for us. And I could go on about it, but I was just disappointed in some of our legislators. Not all of them, but some of them.
Any other venting?
Yeah, I can vent for just as long, but I won't. I think part of the whole philosophy has been concerning, you know. Everybody complains about the fact that they don't have local control. The federal government passes it on to the state and the state passes it on to us. We don't have anybody to pass it on to. I just wish we had local control. And frankly, I think the state legislature complains about what happens with the federal system, but they do the same thing to us. So, I'm concerned about that and we can't continue to do what we're required to do without any solutions. And that's exactly what they've done to county government.
Well, if I may add on to that, complete my thought too. There is a solution and they know there's a solution. And the solution is the property taxpayers fund that solution. And we come to them with alternative solutions so that those burdens don't go on our property taxpayers. But it's always looked upon negatively, or it has been looked upon negatively.
I'm going to chime in. You know, I was out there in Pierre and I remember talking to now Congressman Dusty Johnson when he was the top assistant to Governor Dugard and talked about these kinds of issues. And he said, "Well, you can just opt out." And when I talked to legislators, they said, "You can just opt out." And when I complained to Supreme Court Chief Gilbertson, because he had raised pay to outside attorneys more than three percent, I said, "You know, that's more than we're allowed to raise taxes." He said, "Well, you can just opt out." So, the people should know that our legislature, our administration, our judiciary think that all we need to do is opt out. And so, when we opt out, don't blame us. And going back to our friends out there in Pierre, there's the old story about a guy gets upset with the way things are done out in Pierre. And they decide to, because, you know, they think they know more than we do. And so, you run for office, you win, you go to the legislature, and suddenly you realize you do know more than all those people back there. And so, it's an endless cycle of they know more than we do.
Well, I'll tell you, before I was came on the commission, I did wonder about how the county commissioners whined all the time about not having any money. But sitting up here, you do understand, and Commissioner Kersky's absolutely right, the only option, even though we continue to bring options that would help to pay for particularly the public safety costs, which is our costs that are rising eight percent or more a year, and try to spread those costs to the folks that are coming to town and engaging in activities that sometimes land them in our criminal justice system through a sales tax or bed, board, and boots tax or something, constantly get shot down. And so, this year, we're going to go into another really difficult budget cycle. Last year, we elected to use the very last bit of the opt-out that we had available. We didn't increase that. But honestly, looking forward into our budget this year, I don't know how we can move forward without an opt-out right now. And that's just the reality of where we live up here. And so, you know, just to be clear with the taxpayers that it's not that we don't look at options or that we don't try to bring options forward and that we don't work hard every day to keep our costs down. We went on a tour of part of our facilities this morning and nobody could say that anybody that works for the county works in a Taj Mahal. I mean, we've got folks working with desks that they've recycled and pieced together and taken off of other governmental entities when they no longer wanted them. We take them. So, I think that, I think we do a really good job with the money that we've got, but we need some help to address the things that are mandated that we provide. And it looks like the opt-out is our only option, so. All right. Now, we all got to whine and vent, so I will move on to item thirteen, Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports? Hearing none. Takes us to new business. Is there any new business? Any old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess our meeting.
So moved. Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will plan to reconvene in about ten minutes.